Yeah.
It's okay, it was.
It is eight o'clock, so if we could stand for the pledge, call meeting in order.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Anyone for public discussion, Leroy, this will be your time.
Okay. We, we went on survey both sides of the road and stop of the road. And a lot of places, there's almost five foot of difference, the road is that much higher than either side. I mean, uh, just want to keep you abreast of what's going on and hopefully we get this resolved, so.
Very good, yeah, thanks for the information.
Thank you.
Have a good day. Anyone else, do you need to have a public comment there?
Yep, absolutely, so we have an update from the nine one state level group. They are going to be closing the West Des Moines and Davenport nine one call rounding centers and moving them to Council Bluffs in Raleigh, North Carolina. That's on top of them pulling back nine one funds from local level. I would guess they're gonna start forcing consolidation, so I think we should probably start looking at doing something there instead of putting all that loan in the local taxpayer's account, so just want to give you heads up, nine one calls will get routed through another state, taxpayer money will get sent to another state, that's all I've got for now, so.
Thanks Derek. Okay, I'll need a motion to approve the, or is any other public comment, I don't think so. Need a motion to approve the agenda in minutes from September thirtieth? Motion by Hawes. Second by Stecker. Discussion. None in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carried. Discussion decision review and approve claims. Have a chance to review the claims. Take a motion anytime.
Did anybody else notice the fifty thousand dollars in roof repair to the Titanica shop? Secondary roof department?
I didn't either.
I just kind of figured that was somewhat substantial on a topic that I don't think has been discussed here at all.
Okay, did I miss something?
Do you, do you have a problem with the roofing fix?
On the surface, no, I just, I guess, I don't know any details about it, but I would have thought that would have been discussed, but we changed our policy to not require prior authorization for anything for the secondary roof department, so. I don't know if that.
I guess I assume it was on some sort of a regular schedule.
Well, if you want to call Doug and ask him about it, call him. Maybe we can ask about it.
We can call him up, that's fine.
Hey Doug, it's Cash up here in the boardroom.
Uh, yeah, we got a question on claims, if you would mind coming up?
Good morning Doug. We had a question from the board on the re-roofing of the Titanica shop from Northern Cedar, Northern Cedar Service Company. Or what, I guess what the.
The shop needed a new roof.
Is there a reason that wasn't discussed here at all? I didn't even know it was a project that was happening, I guess.
We, it needed a new, it was leaking. I called up Northern Cedar to patch it. They said it, it was worn out, it needed a new roof, I told them, I hired them to repair it, so.
Okay.
There's a rubber roof on top of the ca- or the concrete up there too?
It's concrete, yeah, so it's rubber roof with ballast.
Okay.
Lifespan, something like that, is it?
Twenty years, and I think that's the first. It was about early nineties, so.
When they built that?
Yeah.
Okay.
Um, I actually had another question that you might be able to answer on the claims for health insurance. I didn't see anything for stop laws, did we not have anything for stop laws?
We did not this time.
Thanks Doug.
You're welcome.
Is there a motion for the claims? Motion by Garmin? Give a second. Second by Hawes. Discussion on the claims. Hearing none, all in favor of approving, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Budget status report, let the record reflect we acknowledge that. Any questions? Okay, and we can also acknowledge the transfers made by the county auditor. Next is discussion decision to review and approve resolutions for Cassuth County payroll changes, resolution number ten dash zero seven dash twenty-five dash zero one. Well, and we are not, we are not making, taking action on these resolutions today, is that my understanding?
No, I think, um, I, we need to discuss them and talk about them and come up with a, with a plan, but Ann has not gotten back to me with the final approval, and there have been a couple of changes. I did send an email to you guys along with her, and I have not received anything back from her, so I did do a follow-up and still haven't. I know she's been very busy, so I don't want you to approve them until we get her final say. So, um, I think, I don't know if you can make a decision today without the resolutions, I don't know, but, um, I want her final opinion before you approve the resolutions.
Okay.
I did put the copy that, I'm waiting for her to respond on, in your board folders, so that is the copy we're waiting to hear on. Um, there was just some minor changes as to adding hourly on a couple of the resolutions, where they're not salary, they're hourly, so we added the hourly wording as well, things like that, so. And then, um, department heads did a good job of input, if I missed any names of anybody or had anybody on there, so I think we're good with that.
So everybody happy with the resolutions so far?
Um, I team would like to stay with monthly if possible. Right now, we process payroll twelve times a year, and so that'll go to twenty-six times a year already. I'm working around vacations and holidays. I know it's a pain, it's gonna be more work, more effort, and, um, my staff appreciates getting paid once a month, so. That's just what we've got, so.
Okay.
Okay, Phil, did you have something?
Yeah, I thought after, I tried to talk to you yesterday, but you were gone, I was gone last week, so I didn't get a chance to talk to you, but EMS was gonna be on its own separate resolution because of the date change?
Um, we have not heard back from Ann yet on that or anything, so right now, like I said, we're not passing any resolutions yet till we hear back from Ann.
So I will not be able to attend the next couple of meetings for sure. If it's gonna stay this way, I'd like to ask you to table it until I can return, because this is gonna cause quite a financial hardship in my budget, and I don't have the tax levy to support hiring additional people to make that kind of a schedule change. So if this has to change to me going to a Monday versus a Sunday, it's only one day. The payroll can remain the same, time cards will be due on the same exact day as, as this is. She can do the payroll on the same exact day, I just need to have my week start on Mon- on Sunday rather than Monday. It's the only change we have to do, and if not, if that's not possible, then we need to seriously look at what it's gonna do to my budget and what it's gonna do to us financially, and where we're gonna come up with the extra money to hire the additional staff to make that change, so.
I'm still confused as to why that would cost more money, I'm not.
Because I cannot have people working six twenty-four hour shifts in a row, and by changing that one day will cause them to work on their third rotation, six consecutive twenty-four hour shifts, and my staff will not do that.
Yeah.
So I will have to change the schedule and hire more people to have more rest days.
So you just, the only change you would like to see is starting the day on Sunday?
Seven AM Sunday versus seven AM Monday. Everything else will remain exactly the same as what's on here.
How would that affect other departments? Would that affect other departments if it was a starting day of Sunday instead?
It would highly affect the jurors and the law enforcement because we work seven days a week.
They, they would have to be separate, and that's the question that we have into Ann, is can we have them separate from everybody else? Is that okay to have their, their week separated? Yeah, yes.
As long as they're still in by the way.
Right, exactly.
Okay.
Okay, well, we can get that answered.
Right.
I'll just be gone for a couple of weeks here, so I won't be able to have any input back.
Yep.
Okay.
Yep.
But that was your concern?
You're right. Very good.
I need, need to share that before the department meeting and stuff, so.
Thanks Phil.
Any other comments?
Oh, sorry, I have yours, updated one, Doug.
Well, I guess you're talking about pay periods, is that? What is, what is the pay period, is there gonna be different pay periods for everybody?
No, everybody's will be the same.
And it'll be seven, seven AM on a Sunday will be the beginning?
No.
That's what Phil was asking.
That's what Phil asked for. It's.
It's just for me.
Just for EMS, not for you.
Yeah.
Well then, everybody will not have the same pay period.
Right.
It'll be the same pay.
That'll, that's one of the questions and discussions, so.
Cause for the rope department, it would be best if it started at midnight and ended at eleven fifty-nine.
On Sunday, or?
Whatever, but a day begins on, at midnight and ends.
At midnight.
Yeah, eleven fifty-nine.
I, I think it's, it's.
Uh, one, eleven fifty-nine fifty-nine.
We have it starting at twelve oh one and ending at midnight, is how it's worded, I think so.
And, yes.
Would that, would that work?
Cause that's in the middle of their schedules. Cause they start at seven, right?
Just the same, I mean, we get our Sunday, when they come in on Sunday, they technically work till six AM Monday, but they get paid out till Sun- yeah, they're paid out Monday to Sunday, because ours is paid out.
Okay. Questions that the attorney has to answer yet?
Yeah, just to clarify.
Yeah.
Any other questions or discussions that need to be had?
Is there a need to place employees that are being paid by wage in the new definition of pay? The, what, the way I'm reading this resolution, the pay is going, the gross amount is gonna be a salary divided by number of days worked.
Yeah, so that's the resolution that Ann had sent to us, and it's gonna be the same whether it's number of days or number of pay periods, but that is another question we have into hers, can we change that to, to number of pay periods instead of number of days? I don't know why her resolution was that way, if legally that's the correct way, but, um, that is a question we have into her too, is if that can be just changed to pay periods twenty-six instead of numbers of days. But I don't think technically there's a difference between the two, except for the wording. Unless somebody knows something, I don't know. So that wording came from Ann.
Any other questions? Yeah, well, we'll wait on clarification from the attorney and have to go from there.
Um, I really don't, I hate pushing this down the road, because we really need to get a decision so employees have a plan and, you know, get it finalized. So, is it appropriate to ask how everybody's feeling about the board members, how, if there's any issues you guys have or questions or comments?
No, I, I mean, I just would like to get it going.
Yeah.
Yep.
I'd like to get it going, so that, that, that was the main goal, so employees had, you know, some time to adjust to that, and the longer it goes, you know.
I think it's important for everyone to know, they're gonna get paid every two weeks, and it's gonna start here. Whether they pass it, I mean, I guess there's a chance it won't pass, but, but I don't think that's the case, so as far as people getting prepared, notices out, get prepared, this is gonna happen.
That's what I wanted to know.
Yeah.
Okay, not so much. Thank you.
I think we obviously need to get our questions answered and clarify it and get a final version approved by our legal counsel, but, I mean, as far as the substance of the conversation, Phil's the only one that really has anything there as far as the schedule of the days. So as long as that's not an issue, to have them on a separate schedule, should be able to brush up the word and move on.
Phil, are you gonna be here all week if we have a phone conversation and you're available?
I'm here this week, yes.
Okay, maybe we'll try to find a time you can be there too, so you can explain it to her.
Yeah.
Okay, yep, very good.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Nice roll.
All right, moving on to discussion decision review and approve Cassuth County employee handbook. All of the department heads have reviewed this and.
Department heads met September twenty-fourth, I'm pretty sure we're there. The attorney had come back with her clarifications. And so pending the section on scheduling and working overtime, two point two C to adjust for EMS, can get that answered, I think. I've asked people if they see something, you know, you start to glaze over, I think it'll still be a work in progress. We need to continue to go over it, there's a reference to policies which we need to probably brush up to and do a review of those policies and references.
Are there questions from the board on, on any of it? And I just want to say thank you for working together, all department heads, and getting this done, that's, that was, that was good.
I'm just going through it a little bit more, the compensatory time, does there need to be anything in there as far as because of hours? Like, there used to be some kind of a statement in regards to when that one and a half hours takes place, because like for people in the courthouse, it doesn't take place until they are, work forty hours.
Forty hours, I.
And that's no longer in there, I think that should probably be clarified.
I don't think the thirty-five hours is in there, but the starting at forty hours for one and a half, but the one for one.
I guess I'm just looking at twenty, two point two D.
Yeah, it's not.
And it's not in there.
No, I know that's, the thirty-five is not in there.
Oh, okay.
Just the forty is in there.
Okay. Just a, just a clarification, so there's no question.
Where does it say that it's accrued over forty hours?
Which section are you going to look at?
Two point two D.
Yeah.
Two point two D, I'm not hearing you very well.
Yes, two point two D.
Okay, thank you.
The second paragraph of, the second paragraph of section two point two C scheduling working overtime does state that the excess of forty hours per week for overtime pay, and compensatory time is a way of compensating for overtime pay. And there, for that paragraph, it does say the defined work week commences at twelve oh one on a Monday and ends twelve o'clock midnight on Sunday.
Doug, tell me again when your work week starts?
Just what.
Is it just, is it the same as what's stated in here?
The rope department though.
Well, that, yeah, that's right.
Further collective bargaining unit is paid overtime for anything worked over eight hours per day.
Right, but your work week is Monday at twelve oh one AM and ending at midnight on, so, okay. Yeah, and yours is Sunday, or say, tell me again?
So it's Monday, six AM, but then Sunday night, they come in at six PM, and they work until six AM, because they work twelve hour shifts.
Sure.
So when they're done, so eleven fifty-nine fifty-nine hits, and they're still working until six AM on Sunday. Or six AM Monday, yes. But in two point two C, that's written, it says, please note the work week is for computing overtime, blah blah blah, parentheses, emergency services and dealers, so please have some clarity.
Any other questions?
What's the reason for the difference in, um, vacation being earned in three point two A?
Three point two A.
Which equals?
The difference between the departments?
Yeah.
I think those were, um, based on their hours with their days off.
The hours, they have different hours that they work.
Twelve and twenty-four hours, it equates to a formula that's compare, or equal, but.
Requires definitely hours a year, week off.
Yeah, okay. Again, I think we discussed this before, but maybe just for refresher, we've talked about numerous times, our, our current vacation, it takes a year before there's any time. We did look at, at a six months level after an employee hired, that they would also earn equivalent two and a half days.
Is that included?
It's in there, it's right now, and that, if you look at that chart, that was added.
Top line on the chart says six months.
So they would get twenty hours after six months of work. So that is changing it, but we've ran into, you know, most employees or most new hires have something that's going on. Some departments have the availability for comp time, the majority don't, but just to accommodate some new hires.
Did I answer your question Kyle?
Okay.
Good morning. Anything else from the board? Questions, concerns? Is there a certain section you wanted to continue reviewing, or?
I see three point eleven military leave, just as the heading, but no words on it. Do we need something for that yet?
It's under military, three point eleven military and then three point eleven A leaves available.
Okay.
A, B, C.
A, B, and C, and that's directly, nothing was changed or added, that's directly from, under failing medical.
All military, yeah.
Donna, a question for you. For the health insurance part-
We're on section four one.
Yeah. Uh, it says employees who are on average thirty hours or more, or eligible individuals are eligible, whatever. For that health insurance? Is it thirty, it's supposed to be thirty, not thirty-two? I, I guess I had-
We, we do a look back, we start from March until March, we keep track of the hours, and has to average that thirty hours, that's what the Affordable Care Act.
Okay, okay. I guess I had thought it was thirty-two, so I'm hiring part-timers, so I can't hire anything, or I can't have any-
They're not to average.
Thirty.
Average thirty.
Average thirty for that, that look back period.
Okay, good to, thank you.
We have had employees that have met that threshold, but the majority of people keep them, you know, under that.
Yeah. Doesn't make the meeting mindful?
Mm-hmm, very much so.
Okay, thank you.
I think what Bailey said, that's a good point. I think going over this, you can look at it, you can stare at it, but until a situation presents, you really have to, to dig into what's there. By no means do I think it's, I mean, there's not questions. But I think this needs to be an ongoing discussion, an ongoing understanding. I think the intent was to provide some uniformity. It used to be where each department was listed, different starting times, different ending times, different- and it just, it's very difficult to, um, I'm not coming up with the right word, but it's very difficult to assure that we're, we're meeting the expectations as written.
Are we ready for a motion, or?
No.
Amber, you're, okay, that's fine.
No, I'm looking at something.
That's fine, take your time.
I guess I'm gonna say out loud. We've worked on it, everybody's looked at it, everybody's had the opportunity to look at it for quite a while. Uh, I'm gonna make a motion to approve the handbook as presented. We're not chiseling this, granted, we can change it if something presents itself. I'll make a motion to approve the handbook.
Okay, motion by Haas to approve the handbook as presented.
Awesome.
Is someone else, okay, second by Stackher?
I clarified mine, so I'm good.
Okay.
Yep, I'm just in comparison.
Yep, sounds good, any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of approving the handbook as presented, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carried. Thanks, Donna, and the rest of you for working on that.
Thank you, everybody.
Okay. Good to have this. What's that? Yeah, well, yeah, that's very true.
Yeah.
Is Doug in here?
Yeah.
Doug, we are up to you next, whenever you're ready.
Yes, good morning.
Good morning. Anything for the right-of-way? Or no, I'm sorry, we're in gravel pit leases first.
Correct, we had, we mailed out leases for, um, gravel pits, we have two that have been returned. Uh, one being the Blackland gravel pit, which is in Palo Alto County. And, um, I did include a motion to approve along with the location map of that. And, uh, the Whittmore gravel pit, uh, lease for that. Uh, everything's the same terms as what the last three years have been. So, I would ask the board to approve of these individual leases.
We'll need two separate motions for these, correct?
Yes, I have prepared two motions, one for each lease that has been returned.
Okay.
There you are.
We need a motion to approve and authorize Chair to sign a three-year farm lease with David Blacklin for section twenty of Fairfield Township. Palo Alto County, all right, a motion by Haas.
I'll second.
Second by Wacter. Discussion on the lease. If not, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carried. Need another motion for the same, to do the same with Dahlhouse or Egg in Whittmore section sixteen. Is there a motion to that effect?
I'll make my-
Motion by Wacter. Second by Haas. Discussion. Not all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carried.
Like Jark, Jark's laughing.
Oh.
Yeah, grabbed an old, sorry.
Um, okay, Carter, we have a place for you and Tammy to sign right here, and I will notarize that. Thank you, thank you.
All right.
Um, I am, uh, starting the advertisement for two, uh, gravel pits, one, uh, the tenant chose not to renew the lease, and we did terminate that. That would be the cylinder pit. I think it's fourteen acres or so. And then, we also have pasture land over at Hutchins. That is, uh, we do not have a lease on that, so I'm advertising that. Bringing that to the board. October twenty-eighth, uh, to review, I've asked the bids for those to be turned into the engineer at twen-, uh, the twenty-fourth, and I'll, uh, review those with the board on the twenty-eighth. So, we'll see how that is taken care of.
Is that the pasture that Cody Dornbear is currently using or what?
He had.
He had?
Um, he asked some things last time, and it, uh-
For fencing?
Was not worked out, so we put it back for leasing, yes.
Okay. Has he been in touch with you lately, or no?
I talked with him last week.
Okay. There you go. Anything else on that topic, or? Anything else?
There's no, there's notes, uh, request for construction in the road right-of-way. So, for discussion, um, I received a phone call from a landowner, uh, who owns property in section twenty-five of Portland Township. Requesting that the road between, uh, twenty, Portland twenty-five and Buffalo thirty, uh, be vacated. It's a hundred ninety avenue, uh, from B nineteen to two hundred ninety street. There was a bridge on that at one time. It was a trust bridge that was in very poor shape, we actually have removed it. Landowners now have, uh, deeded some property to each other, so the landowner on the north side of the drainage ditch owns all the property, and landowner on the south side owns all the property. I would like to, uh, set a public hearing for that, to be vacated. So, next week, I'm going to put it on the agenda to set a public hearing date. I'll also bring some more specific information, um, photographs of what is going on there. And, uh, everyone will be able to, uh, be a little bit more familiar with the situation. Uh, we did have a truck last week that, uh, the engine started knocking on it. It's a two thousand three Sterling, has a cat C thirteen engine, it's got four hundred seventy thousand miles on it. Uh, we have looked at the filter, we have not pulled ahead for the oil pan. We, there was aluminum in the filter, so we are hoping that it's a, a cylinder sleeve. We'll know more in the end of this week. I'm still working with Matthew to get some, get the traffic marking completed correctly on the resurfacing projects. Uh, the bridge project north of, uh, Sexton has, the bridge, the structure is complete. People need to install guard rail, the contractor does. We've finished up the work, and we've notified the contractor that it is ready for them. So, uh, that, uh, hopefully will be, uh, completed and open to traffic, uh, soon. Traffic marking, I would assume that they are going to be done today, maybe tomorrow, with all of the center and edge line work. The construction on Highway eighteen continues. I have not been, uh, at the realignment at Sexton for a while, I need to get out there and just see what the status of it is. Drainage District Four, lateral forty-two, they're crossing four hundred and tenth street today. We do have open positions, uh, we gotta advertise the LaCote shop, get an operator in there. We, we do have an engine braking ordinance, I don't know if the board is aware of that. I put a copy in your electronic folder today. We have had a person request for a location. We have the ordinance, but we do not have any locations where the ordinance is in effect. So, by resolution, the board adds locations. And I, um, I want to bring this location to the board, and I also just want you guys to be aware of it, so we'll talk a little bit more about it next week. And if there are other locations the board would like to add, it would be an appropriate time to do that, try to get all the locations, get them signed correctly.
What's the one that you have?
Yeah, it's actually at Sexton. For traffic that is, would be on Highway eighteen and turning to either go north or south to have a, um, engine braking, jake brake, uh, enforced.
Sure.
So, when this was passed, there wasn't any locations listed at the time?
The board did not
Have it.
Ask me to do anything extra.
So, you, you, if, if you get a location passed and everything, you'll have to sign it?
Then it needs to be signed, and then it can't be enforced.
Theoretically, from all four directions?
We would have to, yes, define those areas correctly. It could be one direction, it could be two directions, and, you know, so, yes.
Dig myself a hole and get in trouble with everybody that wears a badge. There's an engine ordinance affecting Elgona right now, and no one assures, and nobody enforces that. I know, I'm not asking for a comment.
No, I, I-
It's, we're in, my point is that we'll spend time and money, and, and there'll be no result. Because if nobody's sitting there when it happens, and then it's subjective, and anyway, I'm not saying we shouldn't, but just-
No, I- And we may need to bring Sheriff Fisher in to discuss it also.
So, that'll be next week's agenda?
I will just leave it with discussion right now.
Okay.
Until we are for sure, the board is for sure, they want to move forward, we'll, we'll make sure, so. We're working on the comprehensive plan with the Soup Waste Management Association, and then with insurance, uh, and Donna is here. But, uh, if we are gonna move towards a high deductible health plan, we're going to have to move fairly quickly. We, Donna has started the process to renew flexible benefits, enroll in flexible benefits. If we want to have a high deductible health plan available January one, we need to be able to have people opt into that. I think that it would be possible to do that at the same time that we're talking about flexible benefits. I have visited, uh, with Michelle Moon at Wellmark. We're still trying to, she's verifying that, yes, it would be possible. We need to figure out what the financial arrangement will be, uh, for that. So, I would, if we are gonna move forward with a high deductible health plan, I think we need to start next week with some workshops and get, uh, some of these decisions made. I know Donna forwarded me an email yesterday, and it does not sound like-
You can't have a flex savings account if you have a high deductible plan, you need to have HSA, a health savings account. Kathy Clark, who is with WageWorks, I presented that question to her, and her questions are, are you going to do it mid-year? Are you going to offer, you know, so we need to iron out some of those details. We historically have open enrollment, um, the dates that we have designated this year are June, or excuse me, November third through the twelfth, um, because it starts with the, the calendar year. And so, it's kind of starting to come to where a decision needs to be made, or at least we need to clarify with employees. You may be doing this for six months, you might be looking at it again, depending.
You may be signing up for it in anticipation that it might happen, but if a certain number of people don't sign up, it won't happen anyway.
That is correct, my understanding.
And back to the flex savings account, that's only as applied to medical, isn't it?
Medical, dental, I mean, right, but if you go into a health savings account, I do believe you can have a flex savings account for vision and dental.
And childcare and everything else?
Yeah, childcare separate, I didn't pull childcare in, yeah. Because that would not really, that would not be impacted either way. But, it will be kind of an education, and you might have a flex savings account for childcare, and you might have a health savings account for a flex for healthcare for six months, then you may go into a health savings account. for healthcare for six months, then you may go into a health savings account.
I don't know, I'm so, I don't know, I don't have a clue.
I don't have all those details.
I would think that if you have a health savings account, you can use it for dental and vision. I would think you could have flex for that either, but I have no idea.
I think, and what I read, and again, we would have to to iron that out, but I think what I read is that it's a health savings account, unless somebody knows different. You have the flex savings account for the other two.
Don't forget about hearing either because there are some health savings accounts that do pay for hearing.
Oh, I bet they do.
I understand, they serve them.
Yeah, I think they do, the health, the health savings account does, and I would assume flex does too.
Yeah, I I just know that it's been health savings account, you know.
Right.
Where I know, but.
Right.
Yeah, so.
So just don't leave that off.
Yeah, so from the
There's a list of things.
From the timing perspective, I think, I guess, back when we were talking about making the switch last budget cycle for this fiscal year. Um the option was available that we could have done a special open enrollment period in the fall or early winter to have that be effective at the calendar year timing to line up with some of those other things. And that was one of the reasons that that would have been a good option. But I don't, I don't think we can wind the clock back now and make a decision all of a sudden that would be effective for January one of twenty-sixth because our plan for health insurance would have started in the middle of the year for the fiscal year. So if we're making a decision for this next budget cycle, it'll start in the middle of twenty-sixth. But we can have a special open enrollment to follow that up if people want to stay on the current plan and switch to line up with the calendar year, so.
Not sure if I followed all that.
Yeah.
Well, our decision has to be in advance of the plan being even available. So since our decision last budget year, which is the year we're operating in now, we didn't open up the health or the high deductible option. I think we need to wait to start that till July one of twenty-sixth. But not everybody has to switch at that time. If we do a special open enrollment period in the fall or early winter of twenty-sixth, people could stay on the current plan for that half a year and then switch in the middle of the stream to line up with those other programs. So and to complete their calendar, calendar year of a deductible and all those other pieces too. But I don't, I don't know how or why we would jump into making a decision to be effective January one of twenty-sixth when we already talked about having that for this coming budget conversation, which then would be effective at the fiscal year. I guess, trying to correlate all the calendars and all that stuff, but with all the other programs and the calendar.
But I think for flex, I I think the the question is are you gonna research the help of the high deductible plan? We we probably need to let WageWorks know, we're anticipating doing that, we're anticipating changing our payroll, so that's gonna be a change for them. And then the decision will be, are you gonna offer a mid-year and then a January? You know, I don't care, but we gotta come up with something. Otherwise, we're just gonna be kicking the can down. And now we're, we said we were gonna look at it and flex is going to be impacted. And we're gonna have to let people know so that they're aware. Because they're gonna have to do, they're gonna have to do probably a second enrollment for flex when we go into bi-weekly payroll because you won't be able to, you won't want the full amount taken out twice, most people.
I would hope, I would hope that this system can divide the total with their end or at least whatever they're doing per month can divide it out and make it work.
But we'll have to have new paperwork, we'll have to have new forms. So that's, we're gonna be doing that because because they set up the system. I mean, they'll set it up, but we have to tell them that we're doing that.
If I'm signed up for four hundred dollars a month, it's gonna change, that that's forty-eight hundred, we're gonna divide that by twenty-sixth. I hope everybody can understand that.
Well, I'm not saying they aren't understanding, it's just that those paperwork mismatch, that that's what you're authorizing as a deduction.
Yeah, I mean, I get matching the paperwork, sure, but I think and I don't, I don't think there's any issue with informing them that there's a potential change coming. But I don't know about trying to make a decision here soon that would be effective for the beginning of twenty-sixth because we wouldn't, unless we're offering a high deductible plan in the beginning of twenty-sixth. Because from our last conversation, I didn't think that was the direction we were going, I thought we were going to, starting at the next plan cycle.
I guess I thought from our conversations, that's when we were getting started as well because it was a budget conversation and it would affect this upcoming budget we're going to be working on soon. But I know we do have these conversations now. Can you, if we, if we, I I'm not understanding all the cycles and the, you know, how this all comes into play um with the plan itself, but can you give us kind of a if we don't decide until it's for next fiscal year, how that will affect us? Will that be cleaner to do it then? Because then our payroll change will already be in effect or?
I guess my question is, can you, I I I understand, I think I understand we approved the budget and what our health insurance costs are gonna be, but everybody's year still runs January one to December thirty-one, doesn't it?
Not for health insurance. Those are on the fiscal year.
The deductibles and everything?
Deductibles are calendar.
The deductibles are calendar year, but the plan is fiscal year, which is confusing. And that's, that's, that's part of what's made it a challenge. But one of the things that Michelle had said is we could do a special open enrollment period to give people the ability to switch, I'd say midstream of the plan year because it would be at the beginning of the calendar year, but it would be midstream of the plan year. But that's where, on the backside, for us to have a high deductible plan turned on or available for employees even January one of twenty-sixth, I think we would have had to have started that July first of twenty-five because that's our plan year on fiscal year times.
Wellmark, well, if if the board would like to the question has been asked to Wellmark whether the terms of the high deductible plan are the same if that could be taken by employees in Kusuth County. I've not received an answer. Two weeks ago, I thought we talked about this and the board had decided to move forward. So if if you do not wanna move forward at this time, we will wait till the next fiscal year. However, when with the flexible benefits, what an employee is going to see is please be, they're gonna sign a document if they choose to take flexible benefits that will say, please take whatever, a hundred dollars per pay period. It's not per month, it's not per week, it's per pay period. And that's what is gonna cause the problem is when we change the pay period. And it's not the only thing that needs to be changed, there's gonna be a lot of work in payroll. Months, not days or weeks, but months of work that's gonna have to take care of with making sure that people request things correctly. Cause we do a lot of stuff right now, it's per pay period.
Can't you change that to ask them to fill out, can't you change the form?
It's gonna have to be, yes.
Can't you change the form and say, what do you want taken out in in the year? And we will divide it by the number of pay periods in the year, whether.
I don't think that's the way it is. Cause you're instructing payroll to take it out, I mean, like a W the withholding. Whatever W form that is. That says, please withhold, if you want extra withheld, it says, please withhold a certain amount per pay period. It doesn't say per year, it says per pay period.
The the flex does do a total amount, but it does say per pay period to equal. So if you have twelve pay periods versus twenty-six pay periods, you're just gonna, it's not, yeah, it's just completion of course. I'm not saying that we can't be done, it's just, we need to take that into consideration. We're starting that and I think we also need to take into consideration that we probably need to inform employees at this plan, at this point, we will have a second open enrollment for flex in July because of the payroll change and because of our anticipated options for you to consider. Again, it'll be an option, it won't be a mandate. But I think that wording, I need to know what you're thinking before I present that to employees. I don't think it would be fair to say, here, we're going into flex as we normally do, sign up your monthly hundred dollars per month or twelve hundred, but come July, you might have six hundred in there, but then you're switching plans.
I'm not, I I think it's difficult to believe, not possible, but difficult to believe the IRS is gonna let you do one thing for six months and another thing for the given calendar year. I could be wrong about that. You know, you could do flex for January through June and then you could switch to, I just don't think the IRS can let you do that, but I might be wrong.
I just, I I again, and I'm looking at two, I don't know all those particulars. She wanted to touch base with me regarding for potential introduction of a high deductible plan starting July first, twenty twenty-sixth. Are you planning to make this an option available for employees to switch mid-year? Or will it be a choice offered with your plan renewal effective January first? Because there is a calendar year.
Hi, I'm sorry, Donna, I haven't heard that. Girl, keep reading.
Employees cannot have a flexible spending account if, say, if they were enrolled in a high deductible plan. So once you enter into a high deductible plan, you lose your eligibility for a flex savings. However, you can have a health savings account instead. You decide to offer the health high deductible plan, you'll also be providing an HSA, will you also be providing an HSA? So again, are we even going to provide that and are we gonna do it through WageWorks or people go to a local bank or whatever?
I just wanna clarify something, um that Doug had said, yes, a couple of weeks ago, you did ask that. But it was my understanding, we wanted to enter into those conversations for the plan for this upcoming budget cycle. I didn't understand that it's taking place right now.
Yeah, and.
That I, that's how I wanna clarify that, I didn't understand it was right now. I thought it was, let's have these conversations so when we roll into the budget, we've already had those conversations, we know what we're doing. That's the way I understood it.
That, that was mine as well. Um and I think to Donna's cl- question and clarification about that, so I think the board, multiple individuals, but us as a whole have said, we're gonna look at this. So yeah, I mean, if if the question is, do we have a special open enrollment for flex mid-year so people can change? Yeah, that's very likely an option. Or I guess, I don't know that we can make a decision or if we need to. But I would say, yeah, if there's a special open enrollment period, we need to do it the fiscal year or prior to the fiscal year so people can change their elections if they switch health insurance plans, yeah, that only makes sense.
Well, and also there was talk that if they maybe went to do the, I know we didn't decide anything, but if they did the high deductible plan, that it was possible that maybe they wouldn't have that same contribution. Or, you know, we did talk about that, so, you know.
You mean like for paying premiums?
Yes.
Yeah, and that, would that be separate from the flex side of things?
No, but I'm just saying in general, that's something that would have to get decided.
Yeah, it would.
Because people don't wanna sign up for that without knowing what their benefit is. I think all of that has to be decided, and I thought that was gonna be decided, like we talked about now for next year.
Yeah, and that's where I was thinking, we were having those conversations to lay out the mechanics and the structure of it now into budget time and then we would actually have a plan change that'd be effective July one of twenty-sixth. But then.
But I get it, there's a lot of, there's a lot of moving.
Yeah.
I think, so we've notified her, I'll, I have to, we'll just say we anticipate a payroll change. We are still considering the option and somehow we'll just have to reassure employees so that they kind of have an understanding.
Because by then that the payroll change would have, will be taking place, right?
Well, it'll go into effect in July, but
Right.
We will have to probably redo those forms so that it matches up to what the anticipation is. So we would have to probably redo it anyway.
So we would have a special.
We would have a special, and we can't stick it back to.
So it would correlate with health insurance changes very well, actually.
Per pay period, right.
Because you were switching it anyway, so you update the form once for both. Should make sense.
But I thought they needed to know, cause they go in and configure our pay dates.
Yeah.
Um all of that, and so that will change the survey came, but we'll have to readjust the survey.
Yeah, but I mean, as far as communication to employees and the possible directions, I think we started that path pretty clearly last year. So I mean, yeah, if we did a open enrollment period, it seemed fairly straightforward to me.
Can you give us a list of things we have to decide? You know, like we have to decide.
I mean, if we're really not, it's the certain.
Cause I know we have to decide, well, of course, we have to decide, you know, people, what they're contributing. We have to decide if we're going to go to the high deductible, if they don't pay anything towards their premium. I mean, can you just put it in a list form of here's the things we have to decide so that we actually, so we're not going back and forth? Like, is that a fair question to ask?
I get what you're saying, I get you. And to be honest, the survey came yesterday, so it was like, okay, this is knocking on the door of three weeks where communication or the parties that are impacted need to know that this might be coming or might be, or has been talked about. I just don't wanna miss something too. If I hadn't told them and then it was like, they said, oh heck, no, you can't do that. Mine was more to communicate, this is what we're planning, is there anything you're then going to need from us?
Well, and I.
So then she fired back with questions, so therefore we're here.
Well, and I was just speaking for myself how I understood it. If the board understood it, other board members understood it differently, I can change my frame of mind, but I was just saying how I understood it.
Yeah, I I was thinking our decision last budget cycle made the decision that we weren't gonna turn on a high deductible plan prior to July one of twenty-sixth. So I was still operating under that timeline.
Anybody else?
I'm I'm in the same boat, yeah.
Obviously, we still need to have the conversation, so that's not.
Exactly, and we do want to start talking about it. We we do want to right now, we're not.
I just wanted to bring that up so that we clarified the timeline, cause I wasn't expecting to turn anything on until January first. Not that I'd be opposed to it, but I was.
January one or?
January one of twenty-sixth, yeah.
I think.
Well, that's what we're talking about, where we are in October of twenty twenty-five, if you wanna turn something on in January
That's my point is I would.
of twenty twenty-six, if you wanna do it, we gotta do it.
Well, I would have last year at this time, but or in March, February, March, but not at this point, no.
Is it, is it better to turn something like that on, this is my question. Is it better to turn something like that on at the beginning of the calendar year?
Isn't it basically for budget, basically for budget, July?
My understanding is, I don't know that we have that choice. I think we can, I think we can turn it on at the fiscal year and also do an open enrollment in the early winter or late fall so that people can switch at the calendar year. But from a decision-making perspective of this board, I don't think we can just turn it on January one.
No, but I was talking, January one, the following year, is it cleaner to do it at a January one than the July one? Is there a difference? So even if, say, we are talking about next budget cycle, then are we doing this enrollment in the fall for January one of twenty-seven? Is what I'm asking. Doug's wheels are turning, but he's not telling us what they're turning on. I can, I can see them turning. If we, can you give me a thought on what I just said? I'm just trying to figure it out on my, in my own mind.
Yeah, I mean, it just, there's gotta be a time where people, we stop talking and start acting. And it just seems like we have the discussions, but we don't have any decisions to move forward.
Well, I think the decision last budget was to move forward with something, and that's why we had it at last open enrollment, explained to employees, at least in brief, had Michelle up, and with the intention that this coming budget cycle, we would actually implement something potentially. That, that was my understanding.
I have no problem moving forward with some kind of a change like that, I just want to understand the timeline. And I just wanna know, is it better to implement that in January one?
I don't know if there is a better time.
Okay.
To, I mean.
Probably depending on the individual.
One time is better than another. Although, to be fair to employees, they need to, there, if there is an employee that's thinking about taking advantage of a high deductible health plan, they need to know that, and they also take advantage of flexible spending, they need to know now whether they should be electing to take, use money in flexible spending or use money in a high deductible account. The same way as everything, there, they need to know their flexible spending that they are planning to take for calendar year twenty six. They, they try to budget individually for themselves so that they are able to take that advantage. And if there's questions in, in the middle of the year or something that's gonna happen, it's difficult for them to take advantage of their flexible spending. Now, if they're able to readjust for flexible spending, if we're just gonna take the flexible spending and go through June and then have a new one for July through December of twenty six, that should, if that's available, we don't know if that's available or not. Is that, am I correct in that?
She asked those same questions. I asked her, what would you need if we were considering this? She asked, well, what are you considering? So again, I think it's more, I'm, this is new territory for all of us.
We have questions that we will try to get answered and I guess we bring them back to the board with the answers. And if the board asks more questions, we will keep on asking the question.
Yeah, I, I think it's, I think it's great to ask the questions and get the answers, but I think at the end of the day, the benefit of being able to offer different start times on the health insurance side of if you had something that started July first and then the following January first after that, so July of twenty six and, um, January of twenty seven, if you had both of those options, your flex spending decisions that you're making now for calendar year twenty six could be carried to the end if you wanted to switch your health insurance plan at the calendar year. And then you could, you could correlate those decisions by postponing the change on the health insurance side.
Well, for, if there's one thing that I have learned, every decision has unintended consequences. And that's where you try to figure out if, if there, if you try to reduce the amount of unintended consequences that can happen.
Well, so I think going forward, I, what I asked before, I think is realistic. You guys have these conversations with whoever you're talking with. And so you understand the decisions that the board needs to make. Bring us those decisions that we need to make. Here's what you need to decide in order to make this come true. I'm not a hundred percent what all decisions we have to make. I want to make them, but if you guys have those conversations, tell us, bring a concise list that says, okay, here's the things that we have to do in order to make this come true.
And this to come true is the high deductible plan being offered July one of twenty twenty six.
In my opinion, but I'd like everybody else to say what their opinion is because that's the way I took it. But I'm okay with changing if the board feels the need to change that, but.
I, I would agree with what Amber had said, but then also, I think, uh, I, I know the option of a special open enrollment for health insurance would open up another option of a timeline to switch. So having both of those would be my thought. But yes, having the decisions that need to be made to have a high deductible plan available to employees July one of twenty six. Anybody else?
Hard for, hard for me to believe, but this, 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 all the government agencies in this world, their fiscal years start different times. I think federal government through October first, I don't know when the state government is. It's hard for me to believe that we need to reinvent the wheel here. Somebody's been down this road, knows how to do it. But my major question would be, I don't believe they're gonna let you do both a flex savings account for half a year and then, and then do a health savings account for half a year unless there is a provision there that says if you're only enrolled for half a year, you can only put in half the amount or something like that. You know, the IRS is not gonna let you be enrolled for six months and put in the full.
Full amount.
I, I think, my personal opinion is, I think there's gotta be a way to line these things up. And, and if somebody pays to work on the deductible for January through July and then we offer a health, a high deductible plan, I don't think there's gonna be much incentive for anybody to switch at that point. You know, if you're sixty percent of your way to your deductible, you know. But I don't know what's on people's minds. I, I gotta think there's a way to make this all work, January one to December thirty first. I don't know. You guys have been around, I haven't. Budgets, I, I don't think the budget, hope, that, one of the goals of this is to save everybody money. Save the employee money, save the county money. I don't think it's gonna impact, if that is the truth, if that's the way it works out, it's not gonna impact the budget in a negative way. So, I, I guess, I'd say get off our butt and get it done.
I like, uh, I like what Amber was saying about a list of decisions we need to make. I think that would be helpful, um, as we move forward. Too, and that had crossed my mind too, just because otherwise we do come back to things over.
And they're spinning our wheels, you don't wanna spin our wheels. And if, if we're not spinning our wheels, it makes your guys' life easier as well.
Right. Right. Correct.
So I guess I understand.
And then it just gets more confusing otherwise.
Yeah.
Yeah. Okay. Well, is, is that, I guess, is that the understanding of the board? Then we'll have budget discussions about it as we roll forward here and?
Well, I, I think we, yeah, we need them sooner than later. Like, we don't wanna wait until January, I mean.
Yeah, no, there, there's the technical conversations of how this happens, so it can happen right away.
No.
Yeah. Yeah.
Okay.
So do you wanna insurance workshop on the agenda next week?
If that gives you enough time.
Well.
You know, will, will you get some of the answers you need by then? If not, do it in two weeks. You know, just so you have enough time to correlate and get questions answered.
Well, I'll be honest with you, the easiest way for me to work is to stay with the status quo.
I think that's not the direction we're going.
Well, then, again, the e, the, the easiest way, and Donna can speak for herself, but, the most simple way for us to go is is the way we have been. There's no, there's no incentive to change. We were asked to do this a few years ago. When the person who used to do it is no longer employed. And now we're asked to go get a bunch of information and add to our workload. And we can do it, but it, again, just, just so you know. Thank you.
Yep, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, discussion, decision, approval of drainage repair requests. Jennifer, you got a few for us?
Yep, I have one for everybody, well, almost everybody.
Except Josh and Allure.
Josh has had one.
You want a couple donated to you? You don't want them yet?
I know he saw that. I did see that.
No, to be honest, we've had far fewer requests this year than I would've thought to date. Uh, just compared to past years, but much rain as we got. Anyway, go ahead, Amber.
Okay. All right, I have number seventy six. It's a Winnebago Cassup Joint Drainage District thirty five dash eighty nine. It's in section twenty six of German Township. There's two blowouts. Um, Grant Farm Drainage has already looked at it, I guess, and they, it's signed by Mark Kercliff. They did attach the drainage district map with circle and marked where the issue is. Yeah, and that basically just says that it is two big sink holes. Um, so I will talk to, I can talk to Grant Farm Drainage about that. Um, and next one is number seventy eight. It just says, okay, main open ditch, Linder Creek. There must not be a drainage number associated with that.
We looked at, I, we looked at the map multiple times and that's the only thing we could see.
Okay. Okay. Um, it's in section twenty nine, um, northwest of the southeast in Buffalo Township, broken tile. Large hole that's approximately five feet by five feet, means around that, haven't been combined. Um, it's where it's great, so I will do some research into that. Cause that would be interesting, how would that be filled out?
I don't know. Yeah.
Hmm, okay, well, we'll look into it, I guess.
Kyle?
I got seventy nine, uh, request number seventy nine, District one fifty one in Springfield, twenty six, it's broken tile around.
All right, you just got the one.
Yep.
I have number seventy five in Drainage District ninety four, section nine of Riverdale Township. It's from Cyril Tilges, washout. Tile may be rusted out, could be, let's see, A, oh, a sixteen, sixteen or an eighteen tile. Red flag, can call the meat landowner. Worst of the bulkhead, he's called me about it, looked at things. Um, and then number seventy seven, this is in DD twenty five dash one seventy six, it's a joint drain over by Corworth. Um, big hole, flagged, twenty inch tile from Mark Studer. Need a motion to have supervisors handle their requests?
Some.
Motion by Wacker, taken by Haas. Any discussion?
Just the one with, one where you're having a problem finding out, make sure the washout is in a drainage district. Does that make sense?
Oh, absolutely, absolutely.
On the ditch, yeah. No.
If it's not a drainage district, like the other one I'm talking about isn't, then you do something else, yeah.
Okay. All in favor of approving the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Many opposed? Motion carried.
Can I ask a question about something with drainage?
Yeah, I got, for discussion.
Oh.
You may.
Okay, so I had, um, someone call and there was a drainage repair that had been fixed. They said it's the same hole that kinda has an issue again. Do I just go back to the contractor for that? We have him take a look at it to, and to see if there was something, I don't know, not done properly, or do I do that first before trying to get another drainage repair request? Because it was already fixed at one time.
Probably recently.
Recent.
This year?
Yeah.
Yeah, probably, I mean, and if.
Before doing another request.
It very easily could be the edge of where they connected to, it might've been soft and it might've dropped a hole in the same area again or whatever. But yeah, I mean, if it's somewhat closing timelines, we'll have to.
I mean, it was fixed this spring, so.
Yeah, and just quick discussion, there is a request for Andy Marin fixing a, a washout on the side of a ditch around Bancroft earlier this year. Andy contacted me when they got the crops off that field and then contractor went out to look at it, said, with the amount of, or the size of the hole, it might take enough rock to get over the ten thousand threshold, but didn't know it depended on how it looked as it filled it in, so. Yes, we'll see where that one ends up, but I wrote a note to mention that.
Okay.
And when we go to the drainage file, do we look at the Excel spreadsheet, Drainage District Request for Repairs to see if things have changed and such like that? I wonder if, I, so I pulled mine up and I think there's a bunch of roles kinda hidden. Will you come look at it and tell me if I'm crazy?
Yeah.
I didn't wanna do anything to it, cause I don't think we're supposed to have the ability to make changes.
Right.
I think you have something, so you're sorted by rank.
And if you select, you make sure you select.
Oh, thank you.
And back to all, otherwise it locks up Jennifer on her end.
Yeah, but why, why are we gonna save that? I didn't think we could make changes.
You can make changes to you how you see it, how you view it.
Yeah. Okay.
It's not changing the worksheet, it's just how you view it.
Okay, thank heavens.
Interesting, okay.
So it's saved that way on?
On just her computer. It wouldn't be, only on yours, yes. Everybody can change how they view it.
If only it's on mine. So I thought after I sorted it, and I didn't say that it would just go back to the way you guys have it, so.
Yeah, no. No, no, it's how, how you view it, yeah.
Yeah, I have to go back in and you put it back this way, and then you'll have everything that you need.
Got it, okay, okay. I, I just assumed it.
Yeah, I saw that right away when it said drain four, all the way down the line.
Yep.
I did that in a meeting, but I didn't think it would save that way.
Yeah, I did it a couple weeks ago and then got back in and it was like, wait a second, why can't I see anything?
I, I, yeah, and I sorted mine by supervisor, just to double check all mine or even a,
Yeah. Yeah. Yeah.
Yeah, last name or a township or whatever, yeah, you gotta adjust it.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, so nothing, I, in my view, changes any of your views?
You didn't do anything, Amber, you're good, nope. No, no, cause even that's how I sort when I have to find stuff too, so just go back and do select all.
Okay. So when, so when I like sort it by supervisor, so I can just see my repair requests,
Okay.
if I don't go back to select all or whatever.
It stays that way.
It stays that way for you too?
No.
No, 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 not me, just for yours.
Just for you.
Oh, so I was under the impression that I was told if I don't, when, when we set it up, if I don't go back to showing everybody, then it locks up you on your end.
The only time it locks me up is like if you stay in it and it says that you have it open.
Oh.
Then I can't go in and, yeah, I can't go in and. Then I can't go in and, yeah, I can't go in and edit in any way.
Okay, okay.
But it doesn't change how she can view it, right?
Yeah, because I've, I've seen that message pop up dozens of times, but I think if, even if you opened it, um, after that and then enable it for editing and save in the same spot, it would wipe, it would, it would still save there, but, um, yeah, it's that's one of the joys of having a hard document that's shared that way, is you could have multiple users pulling it up.
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
It's not like, say, Google Google Drive or whatever, you see six different people have the document open and you see the changes live, it doesn't do that here.
Mm-hmm.
You see changes after it's saved only. So.
Okay, very good.
Y'all have a good day, thank you.
Thanks, you too. Okay, we are up to discussion with our county auditor.
Okay, so don't forget Thursday at nine o'clock is our department head meeting. Next week, our Veterans of Fair Director will be back, so he'll give you his monthly updates. And that's pretty much all we have on the agenda so far, except for our regular monthly stuff. Um, we start election training for our poll workers next week, we'll have two trainings, one on Thursday and one on Saturday. We start absentee voting, opens the fifteenth, which is next Wednesday. So, um, we received our ballots yesterday, so we're, we're ready for our city school election, so, um, I think that is all I have.
Okay, Howard, any board reports?
Nope, I have nothing meetings.
Amber?
I do not have any meetings, um, I just wanted to, um, clarify a little something from last week. The, um, the lease agreement, that will have to be approved by all of the entities.
Sorry, I was going to mention that, thank you.
It, yeah, that needs to be approved by the entities, and, you know, in the little bit that I looked, um, and checked into the insurance part, I you know, I have a question as to why would our lease put in place more insurance than what we physically have? We have two and four, our lease says two and five. Why would we, like, I mean, and obviously, because Sioux County has way more than just that building. So I, I don't know why we would ask for more. Um, so that's a question that I have there, and I know there's a few questions that, um, you know, we've had with, um, the EMA Commission for sure, so we're going to meet on that on October twenty eighth. So, and because we talked about the lease and the dollar amounts prior to or after Krista had her budget set, which I've already talked to Tammy about this, it's not in her budget, so she's going to have to do a budget amendment, um, her budget was already set before we decided that. Um, so there are some things that still have to be clarified with that. And we'll have to, if there's anything, like especially with that insurance that needs to be changed, we'll have to bring that forth here for that decision to be made, to be changed, I would assume. So, that's all I wanted to clarify.
Okay.
Okay. Um, I don't think I had any other, um, well what I'm trying to think of. I think last Tuesday, we had a CHADC executive committee meeting, that went well, had a lot of, um, kind of overall structural discussions that we had, we have another one on this Friday, um. There's been quite a bit to do with things in that realm, but I don't think I had any other meetings, but we are progressing through a transition, um. I would say fairly smoothly, um, there's a lot of things to double check and work through, but it's going well.
Okay. Josh?
Uh, no meetings last week, I do have, um, NCREC, the emergency response, um, or hazmat team tomorrow, along with the transportation policy board. Tomorrow afternoon as well, so.
Very good, and I had no meetings, so. I'll take a motion adjourned. Motion to Stecker. Second by Wacker, discussion. Not all in favor, please say aye. Aye, any opposed? We're adjourned at nine thirty five. Did you get all the claims back?